I call this meeting the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. The first item on our agenda is 2.02, the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Amira Weddington from Blatant Elementary School who's going to lead us in the pledge. I understand she has the best teacher in the school system.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Amira. Way to talk into that microphone. The people on TV like that. 2.03, Ms. Serzak, can you take the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Hommel?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Young?
Here.
Here. 3.01, certification of closed session. Can I have a motion for certification of closed session, please?
Mr. Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge that Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting where heard, discussed, or considered.
Is there any discussion? Oh, sorry. Have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hommel. Any discussion? Ms. Serzak, can you take the vote, please?
Aye.
Ms. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Aye. 5.01, announcement superintendent's report. Dr. Constantino?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening, everyone.
Wait, 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 my bad. Approval of the agenda first. Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda, Dr. Beers?
I approve the agenda, except...
Make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion to approve the agenda, but I would like to pull, if I can find that, right there?
8.02.
8.02, financial reporting, monthly bills, and payroll.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We will move 8.02, sorry, to 9.02. Is there any further discussion? It's been moving second for approval of the agenda with the exception of moving 8.02 off the consent agenda into the action items. Ms. Serzak?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hommel?
Aye.
Ms. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye. That brings us now to 5.01, announcement superintendent's report. Dr. Constantino?
Again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, everyone, good evening. The divisions, all the divisions' middle schools have completed their second year of spelling bee competitions, and each school's spelling bee champion will now advance to the Virginian Pilot Regional Spelling Bee later this month. Champions are from Berkeley Middle School, Anna Zhang, in seventh grade; from Hornsby Middle School, Kieran Barre, in eighth grade; and from Tuana Middle School, Ryan Allison, sixth grade. The regional event will take place on February 20th at 2:00 PM and will be televised live on WHRO. The winner of the regional spelling bee will advance to the national event in Washington, DC, and we wish good luck to our school champions. Beginning this week, our middle and high schools will be holding information sessions for students and families to learn more about the upcoming academic year and course offerings. Students will be meeting with counselors and registering for classes later this month. Please visit wjccschools.org for more information about these sessions and for the registration timeline. And lastly, the WJCC Scholarship Fund provides college scholarships for students graduating from Lafayette, War Hill, and Jamestown High Schools. In 2015, 58 scholarships valued at $65,650 were awarded to seniors from our three high schools. The fund is a community-wide effort to recognize the accomplishments of our students as they graduate from high school and to support their further educational achievement. Applications must be submitted by March 6th, 2016. To learn more, visit WilliamsburgCommunityFoundation.org. Mr. Chair, those are all of the announcements I have this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Constantino. Are there any board members that have any announcements? It was our intention to have the Palitan district seats selected by this evening. Unfortunately, with the snow event and the weather from last Friday, closing the buildings, we were forced to move that back a week for our, we'll do interviews this Friday, and hopefully select a new member at that point. And the other thing, too, Dr. Constantino, we've had a couple of weather events since the last time we got together, and just want to thank you and the operation staff and your entire team for how you've handled those issues and the weighty decisions with which they're made, because they're not easily made. So with that, 6.01, board recognitions. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening. We have a few individuals to recognize tonight. Let's begin by recognizing three Lafayette athletes for being named to the Virginia High School League All-State Cross Country Teams. These students were unable to join us last month due to a track meet. Students, as your name is called, please come forward and remain for a group photo. Brooke Crookston, VHSL All-State Girls Cross Country Team. Delaney Savage, the VHSL All-State Girls Cross Country Team. You may remember this next honoree from last month's spotlight of the Virginia Star Program. Richard Adal was one of three individuals across Virginia awarded a Best Practices Award for his facilitation of the Virginia Star Program. Mr. Adal was recognized at a statewide luncheon where he had an opportunity to meet and greet state legislators. In addition, the award was in the amount of $2,000. Mr. Adal has joined us up front, and we congratulate him and thank him for all he's done. National Board Certification is a highly respected professional certification. National Board Certified Teachers complete a rigorous, year-long process to examine, document, and reflect upon their teaching and its impact on student learning. The process also includes an assessment to demonstrate depth of content knowledge and teaching skills within their specialty. Please join me in congratulating two of WJCC's newest National Board Certified Teachers. We will now have a total of 55 nationally certified teachers. Like to invite Selena Hodnett from Bright Beginnings. Selena?
(applause).
Okay, those are all the recognitions we have for this evening. We'll have more recognitions at the regular meeting in March.
Thank you, Dr. Constantino. Next item on our agenda, 6.02, school spotlight, Jay Blaine, Blatant Elementary School. Dr. Constantino?
Yes, I'd like to welcome Amy Stam, fellow of Jay Blaine Blatant, to the podium to introduce tonight's program. Welcome, Ms. Stam.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chair, Dr. Constantino. I am beyond honored and privileged to present to you tonight some of our students from Blatant Elementary. We will be highlighting our Lit Fit program, which is definitely coordinated and run by Carolyn Christian, our PE teacher, as well as Abby Reynolds, one of our special ed teachers. And at this time, I'd like to turn your attention to our video, and then we will have a short presentation.
Hi, I'm here to introduce to you the Fab Five Lit Fit Program. This is a curriculum that was written in collaboration with health and fitness specialists as well as early childhood classroom teachers. It was created to be a fun and motivating, activity-based curriculum for developing essential content in fitness and motor skills as well as literacy and mathematics. WJCC Schools is very lucky to have this curriculum available to all the elementary school PE teachers in the county. This is due to the government-funded pet program that we participated in a couple years ago. At Blatant Elementary School, I teach two Lit Fit classes, kindergarten and first grade. This class supports specified students in their physical and mental development. The activities are designed to develop their brain and bodies at the same time. Research has shown that physical activity improves health and fitness and academic stamina. Research has also shown a link between movement skills that require crossing the midline and ability to become proficient at reading and writing.
...that struggle with crossing the midline and doing different activities also are ones that tend to struggle with their reading as well as their writing. The exercise is really focused on crossing the midline. The neat thing is, at the beginning, a lot of the students really struggle to cross the midline, but as they get practiced with it, and as they get a chance to do the I-can statement, and they work on it, we see improvement. We see how they start to master being able to cross the midline, and they start to tell us how to do the exercise it is, and how that they can train their brain to be able to make their words and their body match what they're doing. To get to do several activities, and as they work through the activities, they get a chance to practice saying some letters, which for a lot of my kindergarten, it's great for them to really focus in on keeping their body calm while also practicing their letters. And a lot of my first graders are working on their sight words, and they too get a chance to keep their body calm and practice their sight words. We've also incorporated some colors into what they're doing, and the lazy eight, which is one of my favorites, they get to incorporate saying how their body is moving while they're doing an action. And I see how they benefit not only from the exercise, the movement, crossing the midline, practicing their letters, their colors, and their sight words, but they also get to be able to interact with their peers in these situations. They get a chance to be leaders at stations, they get a chance to show each other how to do things, and they get a chance to encourage each other. What have you learned from Lit Fit?
To, uh, like, make, uh, my brain and body match.
Good. Is there anything else you've learned from Lit Fit?
How to do it.
Good job. What have you learned from Lit Fit?
Body and words match.
Make your body and words match. Good job. Do you have a favorite exercise that we do?
Jaw man.
Good. In Lit Fit, do you like to do toe taps, knee touches, or cross crawls the best?
Cross crawl.
Good job. See if you can help me finish one of our I-can statements. Are you ready? I can make my words and body match. Good job. All right, we're going to show you one of our exercises. Let's stand up.
I can make my...
So it's really cross crawl. Can we show how we cross crawl? We're going to show the knee, no, opposites. Good job. One.
Ready.
Two. Ready. Three. Ready. Four. Ready. Five. Ready. Six. Ready. Seven. Ready. Eight. Ready. Nine. Ready. Ten. Awesome. Good job.
I know I can do it.
Definitely out of the mouths of babes, and we appreciate your time in watching that video. As you can see, there's so much that goes on in our Lit Fit sessions. It's hard to get it all in one session here tonight, but we do have some amazing students here as representations of what goes on in our Lit Fit, and I'm going to turn the mic over to Ms. Christian.
Something you may have been wondering about the midline. The midline is this midline that goes through our body, and the research has shown that it helps the brain develop when you do activities where you have to actually cross the midline. So we are going to show you some of our crossing the midline Lit Fit exercises tonight. This is Amira, and Jeremy, and Raphael, and Isabella, and these two are twins, and Thomas. So we're going to make our circle, guys. Can you guys work with me here to make our circle? We don't have our circle that we usually get to stand on, so we're going to join hands and spread our circle out a little bit. There we go. All right, and hands down. All right, feet apart. And one of the things that I tell the students in the beginning, that they learn why they come to Lit Fit class, they learn this I-can statement, which is, "I can make my brain and body work together." So can we say that together before we do our exercises? Let's all say that together. Ready?
I can make my brain and body work together.
Okay. And then when we do our Lit Fit exercises, we say, "I can show I know..."
Opposite.
Opposite. All right, so let's say it together.
I can show I know opposite.
All right, we're going to start with our toe touches. So let's get in our position. All right. Back up a little bit, Amira, so we don't bump each other. Tom, should you come a little closer to me? Okay, here we go. Ready?
One.
Ready?
Two.
Let's see your count. Ready?
Three.
Ready?
Four.
Ready?
Five.
Ready?
Six.
Ready?
Seven.
Ready?
Eight.
Ready?
Nine.
Ready?
Ten.
All right, now let's do our knee taps. Ready?
One.
Ready?
Two.
Ready?
Three.
Ready?
Four.
Ready?
Five.
Ready?
Six.
Ready?
Seven.
Ready?
Eight.
Ready?
Nine.
Ready?
Ten.
Okay, and you saw that we did a series of activities, and at the end, we also learned that we can calm our bodies down, so we're ready to learn in the classroom again. So we all sit around the circle. Let's show them how we sit around the circle, and we say, "I can calm and focus my body." Can you guys say that?
I can calm and focus my body.
All right, now what is our thing that we do to help us calm ourselves? What do we call it when we do this? Our pretzel. So we put our hands out, cross, and we come down, cross, lock our fingers together. And then we take a big deep breath in through our nose, out through our mouth. And another big deep breath in through our nose, out through our mouth. And then we turn up on the roof of our mouth, and close our eyes, and just relax. We got that. I do have to lead you in the pretzel. You guys join us in the pretzel? So starting out, your arms out, thumbs down, cross, lock your fingers together, interlock all the fingers together, big deep breath in through your nose, out through your mouth. And then you close your eyes and you put your thumb on the roof of your mouth. Hopefully, you'll wake up, wake back up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And also, on behalf of School Board Association Appreciation Month, our fifth graders did a little QR coding for you in your card, so I'm going to turn this over to you, Mr. Chair, with directions, so you can do this on your own time.
Thank you, Ms. Stam, Ms. Reynolds, and Ms. Christian. I appreciate the good demonstration there, and they do their exercises better than I do at my gym, so appreciate that. That brings us to 7.01, citizens' comments. Dr. Beers?
When your name is called, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and your county or city of residence for the record. Please, no clapping or other outbursts in support or against the speaker's comments. We respect everyone's comments and concerns. Personal matters are not handled in public session. Please refrain from making reference to specific individuals, whether positive or negative. The board is interested in hearing your comments. However, the board does not generally respond to comments. When your time is up, please stop talking. We need to respect the time of the speaker after you and the time of the board meeting. A reminder that speakers may not yield minutes to another speaker. Speakers shall address their remarks to the school board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, and Ms. Cook?
Ellop Kennedy?
Good evening. I'd like to just address a couple of issues. My child has been in Williamsburg James City County Schools since second grade, and this is probably my third time addressing the school board in the years he's been there. He's now in high school, and once again, the school is not following his IEP. The IEP was not followed from the beginning of this school year until January the 10th of this year. I think we need to do a much better job on providing the services for our students with special needs, and it's unfortunate that we had to get to this point, this far in the school year, to find out that the school was not following his IEP. In addition to that, I won't mention the school, but there are several other issues that need to be addressed at this school. This year, my son, there was incident that happened in our neighborhood, and the school principal, assistant principal, allowed a James City County police officer come on school grounds to question my child at school without a parent being there, and notified me after the fact, but yet, the Caucasian student was questioned and is home with his parents present. So that's a problem for me, so clearly there needs to be some type of training to go on at the school. Furthermore, I know in December we adopted a restraint policy, but the issue is, the restraint should be as a last resort and not something done out of convenience, and my son, who has a history of flight when he's overwhelmed, tried to flee a situation, and he was restrained by someone who's not trained to restrain students, which resulted in the school charging my son with assault and battery on a staff member. That is a problem because it doesn't even, the way the Code of Conduct defines assault and battery is with intent. He was trying to flee. He has a documented history of fleeing, and when we went to an MDR, from what we were told while he was being suspended, I was okay with that part of the explanation. I was not okay when we got into the MDR hearing to have the principal bring up a whole another set of facts that we had no idea about and present it to the MDR committee to say that he not only hit this person, but he continued to hit this person, and the person stood fast on her version of the story until we had to remind her that the facts that she was presenting were not true or accurate, which she presented to us as parents. And she still stood fast on it and told me that this is not the place to discuss this. However, I let her know that we recorded her when she told us what happened, and the information she was presenting to the committee was not what we were told. Thank you.
Jay Everson?
Thank you, Jay Everson, 103 Branscombe Boulevard. Given to understand that we're going to have STEM at James Blair, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. All data. I mean, this is a program that revolves around data, facts, manipulation of data, and, you know, the students will do data-driven projects, whether it be math, algebra, science, and then they'll turn it in for peer review. That is called grading by the teacher. Well, last December, the Future Think came out, and as far as I know, it has not been reviewed here at a board meeting. And the Future Think is what we use to determine our future enrollment capacities. And on page 16, you will see a map of the Williamsburg James City County area. It's color-coded by where population growth. You'll notice that Colonial Heritage is in dark green, meaning over 15% population growth between now and 2020. Makes sense. It's a big community, about 2,000 houses approved. Next, page 17, is a same map, but this time it's on projection of students. And so if you look at Williamsburg Landing area, it's red, zero, age-restricted. But if you look at this same map on Colonial Heritage, it's dark green, over 10%. This is 2,000 houses, age-restricted. Now, any normal development, that's going to produce a lot of kids. So, got to thinking about this, and I recall that back on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving of 2014, two members of the sport and Dr. Constantino met with the board of supervisors about the James Blair situation. One of the supervisors asked Dr. Constantino about the, "How good are these enrollment projections?" And he said, "Three years out, pretty good. After that, more art than science." So, if we take the Future Think projections from 2015, and we'll go three years out, you will decide, you will see that under the most likely, it'd be 246 kids over the current 2571 projections, low-end 167. And when you consider the fact that you've got a 2,000 residential development out there projected to get 10% more students, I submit that these numbers need to be given peer review. And just like our students get peer review from their teachers, seems to me that the responsibility of this board is to do some peer review on these numbers, because we're about to make a very big decision on numbers that may not have accurate data. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Everson.
Good evening, Kim Hunley, 108 Mattapani Trail. And Jerry's here today. We're on behalf of the WJCEA exec board, and it's great that Jay Blatant was featured tonight, but here's some artwork from her first-grade class, and these are students that you don't always see, but we want to bring the students to you. And I'm telling you, you all need to hang on to some of these, because they're our next Monet, Picasso, you know, Rembrandt, I'm telling you. But anyway, just thinking about the budget and how scary it could be, they did these wonderful monsters, and one of them, my favorite one, had all the eyes and... And so, you know, I just really want you all to look carefully, relook. There's one that has like a thousand eyes, that guy right there. And then, there's one with just a big mouth, just ask questions. Don't be afraid to ask questions. And they're just, they look ferocious, but they really, you know, just break it down. And they're great. Find the beauty in them. So, anyway, we have one. You all can pick which one you'd like, which one just speaks to you. But thank you for letting us, again, be part of the process. And so, those are for you all. And we'll see you in March.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley, Mrs. Perel.
David Jarman.
Good evening. My name is David Jarman. I live at 3646 South Square in the Berkeley District of James City County. I believe that the James Blair Fourth Middle School project should be revisited, if only because the conditions have changed materially since the project was conceptually approved in November of 2014. Last evening, I sent you a report detailing why I believe a relook is advisable. This afternoon, I forwarded a brief management summary emphasizing the key points. There are three questions that the school board should ask. One, do the latest student enrollment projections from November of 2015 still justify a new two-phase, 950-student fourth middle school? Two, have the economic conditions in the county changed sufficiently to question the affordability of the project? And three, has the architectural design for the facility changed in a way that merits further discussion since the initial presentation in November of 2014? I believe in an honest, independent assessment of the risks and opportunities preceding a pace with Phase One of the James Blair project would like a result and a decision to defer this project for at least a year until these questions are answered to your satisfaction. Now, the board of supervisors has requested a separate meeting with you and the city council to revisit the project, given these changed circumstances, which I might add are quite significant. You should consider this as an opportunity to get this issue behind you and to set the table for future discussions on the fiscal 2017 budget, which you will commence later this evening, the school division's piece of the county strategic plan. You were recently invited by the board of supervisors to join that process, and other issues that will surface over the coming year. I hope, in fact, I pray, you will avail yourself of this rare moment. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Jarman.
Sandra Magda.
Like this is my new home. It has been 375 days since our first report to CBB regarding our daughter being bullied. 265 days since our daughter was physically assaulted at school. You had plenty of opportunity to address this issue with us. Instead, six months ago, we had to hire legal counsel. To what lengths would you go to protect your child? How long does it take to get answers in this district? Since when have politics and legal maneuvers given way to actions noted explicitly in the student code of conduct and your own operating procedures when it comes to the safety of a child? You hide behind your position, whatever that may be, to protect yourself. First, before protecting the rights of the children, you are in position to lead. How is that leadership? You talk of parental engagement and ensuring what is best for our children. Is this parental engagement, is this what you were looking for? Me, standing at this podium, questioning your abilities to lead and protect? This is three minutes where I feel you're listening. But even now, many of you aren't even looking at me. Because in your mind, I'm not worth it. My child isn't worth your time. You need to know, my child is worth it. And we will continue to fight this battle. We are not leaving. Mr. Kelly and Dr. Constantino, how hard is it to do the right thing? When did you sell your soul for the safety and concern of one child? And was it worth it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mag.
Ryan McKinnon.
Hi there. I'm the new reporter covering education for the Virginia Gazette. Just wanted to introduce myself. A lot of you might have known Michelle Canty. She's moving up to the Daily Press, so I'm going to be taking over her beat. I don't have any cards with me tonight for you all because I just took the position. But I am looking forward to working with you, getting to know you, and covering education in this county. So, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Welcome.
Vicki Robertson.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Robertson. I teach at Clara Bird Baker School and live in James City County. I received my first full-time job here at WJCC Schools. I signed a contract with you when I was 21 years old. My husband works for WJCC, and our daughter went to the schools here, K to 12. I'm speaking tonight about fairness. Fairness in the way raises are divided up among employees. Last year, a 1% raise was discussed at school board meetings, and articles were written in the local papers. The community thought that all employees were getting a 1% raise, but this did not happen. Some got none. I was one of those. I have been here my entire adult career and have a master's plus 30 hours, and I did not get one penny more. I am the experienced teacher who shares my materials, teaching supplies, and books. I am the experienced teacher who helps others fill out student assistant plans and child study referrals. I am the experienced teacher who shares ideas for report card comments and parent conferences. But someone feels that I do not need a raise. Is it because I am experienced? Since I am a kindergarten teacher, I want to give you a kindergarten example. Pretend I have 20 students, 18 or five years old, one is six and one is four. On the first day of school, I give them a special snack. I have 20 cookies. As I pass out the cookies, I give the 18-five-year-olds one cookie. The four-year-old gets two cookies, and the six-year-old gets zero cookies. When that student asks why, I say, you are more mature and have had more preschool experience than the others. You do not need a cookie. The four-year-old is not as mature and experienced as you are, so that student gets your cookie as well, therefore, two cookies. Now, no teacher in their right mind would do this, but WJCC has done this to me and other employees. If you, as a school board, do not feel that this way of thinking is fair, please do not let it happen again. I encourage you to ask questions so that you will not be misled about salary raises. You will hear comments like, "It all averages out." "It all goes across the salary scale." "It all works out in the end." "We're fixing the steps." Those responses do not mean that money for raises is equally distributed. Ask questions like, "How many are getting 1%?" "How many are getting more?" "How many are getting less?" "And how many are getting zero, and why?" Please be fair to all employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Robertson. That brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda? 8.01, approval of minutes from the following meetings, January 16th, 2016, January 19th, 2016, and February 2nd, 2016. 8.03, personnel actions. 8.04, Resolution R516, School Social Work Week. And 8.05, Resolution R616, National Foreign Language Week.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda as outlined by you.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Young. Ms. Serza, could you take the vote, please?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Brings us to our action items. Our first action item will be what we pulled from the consent agenda. 8.02, Financial Report and Monthly Bills and Payroll, January 2016. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
For approval of the financial report, monthly bills?
No, I'm sorry. I actually wanted to talk about that.
Yeah, we have to have a motion so we can talk about it. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of the financial report, Monthly Bills and Payroll, January 2016. Dr. Beers? Dr. Beers, discussion?
Yeah, sorry. Actually, there are a couple of things. One of them, I want to applaud the finance department. I was very much pleased to see under the general operating fund in your report how much of the federal funds you have recovered. And it looks like that you're very prompt in making your reimbursement requests. And that's good. And I wanted to applaud you on that. The other thing I had is, I did have a question. You know, as I'm learning the various columns and the percentages. I was curious about the, under expenditures, administration, it's showing 62.3% of the budget has already been expended. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And is that, that seems a bit lower than it was last year? And, you know, can you give me a reason for that?
Can't give you specifics while I'm standing here, but I certainly will look into that and provide you detailed.
I guess the other one, under, if I went on to the next page, under revenue, capital, projects, funds. And again, it's not that I need more data. It's more, you know, I need to understand exactly how it's working. And I'm looking under revenue and expenditures. I see 4.4% of the revenue.
Is the microphone down?
Oh, sir. And then, I noticed last year, during that same period, I saw 45.3%. Same thing, same question. It's like, why is there, you know, what's the reason for these, you know, these big changes?
We try to be strategic in when we send requests to the city and county to reimburse us for those expenses. If we have a small reimbursement, we wait until we get a larger chunk to request the reimbursement of revenue from them.
That's it? That was all? Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a question. I noticed that on the financial report, it's not showing the shortfall for the state tax revenues. Is there a reason it's not being shown?
In Williamsburg-James City County, the state sales tax is deemed as local revenue for James City County and for Williamsburg. When they appropriate the budget, they are obligated to give us that money, regardless of whether there's an adjustment up or down. If there's an increase in the sales tax, we don't reap those benefits. If there's a decrease in sales tax, the city and county are still obligated to pay us based on their original appropriation.
I'm trying to grasp the depth of that. So, if there is a $3 million shortfall, the county is responsible or the state is responsible for providing that $3.5 million?
The county has appropriated state sales tax based on calculation tools that we get from the state at the beginning of the year. Whatever that dollar amount is, regardless of adjustments up or down, that is what the county and city traditionally give us.
Stunned. Because that's a huge shortfall. I don't know where the county is going to get that money. And so, my next question won't be appropriate because I wanted to know what steps we were taking to address the shortfall in our budget. But since it sounds like there isn't going to be one.
Because they deem it local revenue, that's the way it's handled in Williamsburg-James City County.
Is that the way it's been handled for some time?
From what I understand, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Moved and seconded for approval of the financial report, monthly bills and payroll. Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. That brings us to 9.01, 2016-17 School Year Calendar. Can I have a motion for approval of the calendar, please?
Chair, I move approval of item 9.01, 2016-17 School Year Calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Hummel.
I have a couple of questions about the survey. Is this the appropriate time, Chair, for me to talk about it? So, first of all, I want to thank the school administration for reopening the survey. However, I think it was my impression that the survey was going to be similar to the previous survey and that it would be a very, you know, it would be a quantitative question that would be similar to the one before, that would be asking for input on whether parents, teachers, wanted a longer winter break or a longer Thanksgiving. And the previous survey actually had that question. Am I correct? It actually asked that question. It did. The survey that went out, the second survey went out. So, in my mind, I was thinking it was going to be a similar survey. Instead, there was a Likert scale of whether parents and staff were happy with the calendar from a 1 to a 5. And then, there was a open textbook qualitative space for people to indicate why they were dissatisfied. Or satisfied, whatever, just there's, so from a survey instrument, from a data aspect, it's a little difficult to read the answers. I actually looked through all of them. And there were 32 responses that were in favor of a longer winter break and two that were in favor of the Thanksgiving. So, I think in voting for this, I would like to have some kind of compelling argument. I guess, an educational compelling argument for why the school administration wants us to go with a shorter winter break and the three days at Thanksgiving.
Let me address the survey question first, or at least try to. The first survey was based on trying to receive feedback. There was no actual proposed calendar tied to that. So, we hadn't, the committee hadn't met. There'd been no regional committee. So, it was purely to gather feedback on what people wanted to see in a proposed calendar. The second survey was based on a proposed calendar that met the division's number of days as well as was regionally what the calendars that our regional partners at New Horizons and other programs are sharing. So, it was a, we have a proposed calendar for you to look at and tell us your satisfaction level with it. So, yes, the two surveys were different types of surveys. One was based on no document, and then, the second one was based on a proposed calendar. Educationally, one of the reasons that we have this as our proposed calendar is because of regional programs. The other localities that we participate in these programs, Governor's School, New Horizons, the Center for Autism, other special ed programs, they are all following a, most of them are following a three-day Thanksgiving break and an eight-day winter break.
How many students in our school division?
Over 11,000.
How many are students are you talking about in that?
I do not have that number with me.
I think it's less than 100. Is that? I think it's less than 100. So, I, once again, I.
I want to add to, to Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, may I please speak? Okay, I'm trying to learn this. I'm looking at the overall satisfaction. It's not, it's not that big of a, I mean, the satisfaction is okay. It's 33%. And then, you've got neutral 20%. And then, you have dissatisfied 24 and very dissatisfied 13%. I guess my question is, our previous discussion was about that question and what, what. on what the staff, parents, students wanted. And it was about the dates. And now we're talking about the general calendar. I would have preferred that we kept the same questions and went back to staff and faculty and parents and have asked the same questions because I don't understand how it came about that all of a sudden we're now getting ready to approve a calendar. And when I look at this, five hundred and thirty-five respondents out of a lot of people that didn't participate operations was one percent. Elementary school was most involved. That was forty-four percent. Some students, and most of the parents that responded were elementary school parents. But I'm not sure that I'm ready to approve a calendar without really knowing what people really want for Christmas Thanksgiving break. So I would have preferred that we had kept the same questions. So in that, I do agree with Ms. Hummel, that we should have kept the same questions.
Ms. Cook?
Ms. Overkamp, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Overkamp Smith, two questions I'd like answered. First of all, is there, is this time sensitive? That's my first question.
Yes, it is.
Can you?
To start planning our programs for next year, we do need to know what the calendar is. We do also have a number of families that think we've already waited too long to approve a calendar because they're trying to plan their lives around the school calendar. We do know generally our start date is pretty easy, but the end date would be affected if we make any changes to the holidays.
And my second question has to do with just a little background on the input that goes into a calendar in addition to the surveys. I've had the privilege of serving on the calendar committee before, and it was quite an educational experience. And so if you could maybe provide some primer on that, that'd be great.
As you know, we do a survey to start off the process. Then we also have, locally, we have a calendar committee that includes representatives across levels. It includes instructional staff, operational staff. Generally, it includes a school board member. And that committee then takes a look at the parameters of the calendar, what we need to get accomplished, professional development, the number of holidays, the number of workdays, et cetera, within the framework, the very specific framework that the state has provided us. And then that committee gets together and discusses the calendar. They talk to their fellow teachers and staff and get input from them. We then put together a draft. We share that with the regional calendar committee. The regional calendar committee has discussions. The superintendents have discussions about the calendars and, again, the parameters of the calendars. And then we come up with a draft. This year, we came up with a draft. And then we put it out for additional input through the second survey.
And also following up on that, in terms of the calendar and who target audience for accommodation, it might also include parents who work in one division but children in another. Can you talk a little bit about kind of the?
The regional calendar is helpful for staff members and parents who are connected to multiple school divisions. We have a number of our teachers and staff who live in other localities. They have children in other localities. They are very appreciative when the calendars line up. So the holidays line up as well. There are a number of reasons that we think a regional calendar is important. One of them is the regional programs. But there are other soft reasons for a regional calendar, and that would be one of them. We do have many people who would like us to align with a college calendar. We can't do that just because the timing is completely different, especially with the start time.
Dr. Beers?
Do you have parents on our calendar committee? We do have parents, representative?
Yes.
I didn't hear that. And I just wanted.
Sorry, off the cuff, forgot. Sorry.
Any other comments? So the regional, the regional calendar committee, who does, who does that consist of again?
Hampton, Newport News, Pecosin, Gloucester, us, and York.
So, but who are the people on the committee?
Some of them are assistant superintendents. Others are administrative leaders. We have a couple of assistant superintendents on that committee. And then the New Horizons staff members, the director of New Horizons is also in there.
Okay, so that committee of administrators makes up the regional calendar?
Yes.
And then that goes to our calendar committee and they evaluate?
No, we actually develop our calendar prior to the regional meeting. And then once we all have our drafts from our committees, because almost all of the school divisions have the same process, once we have our drafts, we get together and we negotiate.
And our calendar committee, this is what they proposed?
Yes.
So they proposed the three days at Thanksgiving and then the less than two week break at Christmas or during the holidays?
That is the calendar that came out of our calendar committee.
So if we were to trump that and go back to, go back to two weeks where the kids would not be in school from the sixteenth until the second? It seems like a rather long time to.
Yes, and we would have to make adjustments other than the Thanksgiving break as well because we would not be at a hundred and eighty days.
Right, and take, and so the, one of the importance with the regional calendars is in addition to what you talked about with staff, our businesses have to make those decisions. Helps the businesses as well as with their, when they have employees that are in various, various school systems and trying to align with, align with all of those calendars and do, and all that. I have to say, I was, I thought the survey that we were going to, when we said resurvey, that we were going to resurvey with the same survey that we had before. So I share that concern. Now, when I look at the overall satisfaction, overall satisfaction, ten plus thirty-three plus twenty, so that's sixty-three percent, we're either neutral or satisfied and very satisfied, right?
Correct.
But that's of a total of five hundred and thirty-five submissions.
Correct.
How many submissions do we normally get from the calendar?
We had, from the first survey, we had four hundred and eighty-eight from our October survey. And that is significantly higher than previous years. And then this one, five thirty-five. We undertook a number of communications efforts to try to get people to take the survey and then followed up closer to not only the start, but also the end of the survey.
I'd say you got twenty percent more respondents.
And we did great.
If, nothing lies like statistics.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to vote to approve the survey, the calendar. I think it's, I think it's important that we do so. I think that we follow what our committees, what our committee came forward with, which consisted of our teachers and some representative parents. I think that's, that's important that we follow that model.
Chair?
Ms. Young?
What is the time sensitive element of this? Other than, I realize that a lot of things are, it's like a domino effect.
It is. And that's, that's basically it, is a domino effect. The longer it takes to approve a calendar, some things get pushed back, including professional development planning for next year, families planning. It does, the timeline of approval affects the timeline of getting the year started for the next year, the planning for the year.
Is there a state mandate by what date the calendar has to be approved?
Not that I'm aware of. I can check into that for you, though.
Ms. Hummel?
I did want to make it clear to the community about the Labor Day start, just so that the community knows our hands are tied as far as when we can start school. We have to start school after Labor Day at this, at this point. And I just wanted everyone to know that, that there are certain things that are within our control and certain things that are not. And I think it's important that unless we become a waiver district, that we have to comply with our state law, which is that we have to start after Labor Day.
And we would love to have more flexibility in planning the calendar. That would be a welcome change to have that flexibility. However, we have not met the criteria for a waiver. We're getting closer, it seems like, every year. But I don't know that that's a good thing.
And then just a question for maybe ongoing procedures that if, is it, like, I guess the other districts have already approved their calendars?
They're in the process of it. They're in the same kind of timeline. There are some that are doing it this month. Others have already, they've had their first kinds of meetings just like us. So it's, they're all in process right now.
Do we know whether they're all?
They all look good so far. We had a meeting last week and they all said that everything looked like they were on schedule to approve the proposed calendars that we had reviewed regionally.
Ms. Young?
I do have a question. We're banking minutes every day.
We are.
Does that in any way affect the hundred and eighty days of required dates in class?
We are required nine hundred and ninety instructional hours or a hundred and eighty days. We are, we start the year counting days because that's easier. Once we start missing, we start counting hours. We're counting hours now. So we have to meet the nine hundred and ninety hours, grades one through twelve. Kindergarten is different. So at the beginning of a school year before we miss, we count days. Afterwards, we're counting hours. And right now, we're okay with our hours. Knock on some wood.
Any other discussion on the school calendar? It's been moved and seconded for approval of the 2016-2017 school calendar. Ms. Sersa?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. That takes us to ten point zero one, fiscal year 2017 budget discussion. As a member of the school board of Williamsburg, James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 2016-2017 school budget because my wife is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Mr. Chair, as a member of the school board of Williamsburg, James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 2016-2017 school budget because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe that I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public, in public interest.
Get that out of the way. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. If you'll allow me one indulgence, I'd just like to welcome Mr. Andre to the meeting. Mr. Andre recently lost his mom. And I want you to know that you have been in all of our thoughts and our prayers. And it's good to see you back. So, thank you. When we presented the budget to you, the recommended budget to you, we indicated that we would come back and share information about two items. One was the task force recommendations on health insurance. And second was a proposed recommendation to meet the school board's desire to do some things with the salary scale, primarily to try to fix the compression situation. Second, to ensure that our starting salary was competitive and also to make sure that people at the, at the higher end of the scale also received some sort of a, an increase with the proposal. So Mr. Baker is here this evening to do just that. First, to share with you the recommendations of the health task force and to get your input as we move forward. And second, to share with you a recommendation, first, a recommendation for salaries. Mr. Baker?
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Constantino. During the budget retreat, a health insurance increase was introduced. And so tonight, I wanted to expand a little bit more on that, discuss the health insurance task force and bring some options to the board and also look for some direction from the board. To put this in perspective and into context, we have over thirteen hundred employees who participate in our health insurance. That's over eighty percent of our eligible employees. We currently have two PPO options for our employees. And that means that compared to maybe like an HMO, it has more flexibility for our employees. And also, all our plans include medical, dental, pharmacy, vision, and employee assistance program. Last year, we had a health insurance task force that was created by the suggestion of the school board and of the superintendent. There was three main items that the health insurance task force considered. They looked at impending federal legislation, the fiscal responsibility that we had for the school division, and also looking what's best for our employees for the health insurance. And, you know, looking for the best health insurance at a reasonable cost. The task force included seventeen employees. It was made up of a diverse group of employees from teachers, principals, food service, transportation operations. And also, we had a school board member on the task force. We met three times this fall and they came away with five recommendations. And you have a copy of the task force report at your desk. The five recommendations from the task force, the first one was promote the current wellness programs and offerings at, as long as we incur no additional cost. The task force didn't want to take on any additional costs. They realized we had a lot of value in our current wellness programs and they thought we needed to promote that more. And the next slide I'll get into is an opportunity tonight to tell you more about some of the wellness programs that we have. The task force also recommended that we keep the two PPO options that we currently have. They also wanted to, the task force recommended implementing a spousal surcharge for employees whose spouse has the opportunity for health insurance with their employer. The task force also recommended introducing a high deductible health plan as long as it included a health savings account. And then the last item the task force recommended was subsidies for our retirees for pre-Medicare insurance. And what this is, if an employee of Williamsburg, James City County Schools retires with twelve years of continuous service, we currently pay seven hundred and fifty dollars annually to help for their health insurance before they are Medicare eligible. And so the task force had a suggestion of we could potentially increase that cost. I imagine it had to be significant increase to potentially entice people to retire. And see, some people are staying here just for the health insurance. And so that's something if we wanted to explore, we could. So I want to talk a little bit about, take this opportunity to talk about the wellness programs that we have since we have this opportunity in front of you tonight. Some of the main items in our wellness, wellness program are from our condition care. And that's dealing with chronic illnesses like diabetes, high blood pressure, obesity, where actually through Blue Cross Blue Shield, through Anthem, they'll actually reach out to employees, or employees can reach out to them and help them manage that care from, from different doctors, nurses, counselors, dieticians, and help them manage that care for those chronic illnesses. The Future Moms Program that they have is if you're in your first trimester, if you register with the Future Moms Program and you successfully complete the program, they'll actually waive your hospital copay. The nurse twenty-four seven lines, just like it sounds. Nurses are available via the phone twenty-four seven. Actually had the opportunity to take advantage of it this weekend. My wife has pneumonia, so we got to take advantage of that. We also have tobacco sensation, just like it sounds, to help our employees with that. Live Health Online is a program. It's almost like FaceTiming with a doctor. You get a doctor twenty-four seven and you FaceTime with them. And they'll actually do a diagnosis, even potentially calling a prescription for you. This lends itself to, if you're traveling or out of town. The example I've heard was, you know, somebody was in Florida for a swim meet and their child had an ear infection and they used the Live Health Online. They, you know, diagnosed it, called in a prescription. And so that made the drive home from Florida a whole lot easier. Other opportunities that we have is workshops through our EAP program. We've actually reached out now currently with the benefits committee to solicit them on ideas that we could have different workshops where they'll actually come out to our location on things from budgeting, family, workplace stress, living well. And so we're working through our benefits committee to potentially have some workshop opportunities. Other things to the wellness programs, we have healthcare screenings. We did this last year. We plan to do it again this year where they actually take biometric information and share that with the employees. So there's opportunities there, opportunities to promote it. So there's opportunities there, opportunities to promote it more. We currently send out emails and flyers to our current employees and like to promote it more. To bring it back to our current plans, we have, you know, the two PPO options and we have different tiers within that option. Apologize, I went too far. Okay. We have employee plus employee only, employee plus one, or employee plus spouse plus children in order to be family. So we're anticipating a 2% increase in our health insurance. So with that increase, there's some options. The option is... Are, you know, the employer, we could absorb most of that increase. Another option is the employee could absorb most of that increase. Or an option is we could share in that cost. Another item to discuss is the spousal surcharge. And this came up during the health insurance task force. So maintaining those three tiers, there's some options here. You could implement a spousal surcharge for all spouses is an option. You could implement a surcharge for spouses who have their... Have the opportunity for health insurance with their employer. And that's actually what the health insurance task force recommended. There's also an option of if the spouse has the opportunity for health insurance somewhere else, they not be able... Allowed to have the opportunity to have health insurance here. Those are all options. The last option that the health insurance task force recommended out of these was also offering a high deductible health plan with a health savings account. What the health savings account is, is an opportunity to take money out pre-tax or if an employer actually puts the money in on the employee's behalf and pay for your medical bills that way. Obviously, the high deductible health plan is different. It costs a little bit less, but it would be with a high deductible. It still is a PPO plan offering the same as our other current plans. So that is an option. So the options came in kind of three main areas. So, you know, the cost share, with how to share that potential cost, spousal surcharge and the high deductible health plan with a health savings account. So we just wanted to provide you some feedback and provide you this information and then any kind of feedback you could provide us and we could, you know, look at that.
Mrs. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Baker, I have a handful of questions. You could bear with me. Could you just... Could we start with explaining kind of what local choice is and what our options are for staying with or not staying with local choice at all? Specifically, if you could focus on the fact that local choice offers PPO only products and that's... So if you could just kind of educate us on that for a second, I'd appreciate it.
We are part of the local choice. It's a consortium of government agencies from school divisions and cities and municipalities where we all pull in our health insurance together and we benefit from that experience of all being together. But we... You're correct. We... The choices that we have with them are PPO options with them.
And we can't just say goodbye, local choice, we're not going to use you this year, but next year we are.
It's a huge potential cost and a potential risk where, you know, if we were to do that, you might have a significant increase potentially in your health insurance costs and you have to build up a reserve to potentially cover that cost, too.
Local choice, in other words, isn't something that you can float in and out of depending on...
No, I wouldn't recommend that. No, we feel very fortunate. We benefit from it. We benefit from this experience of all pulling together our experience with them.
Also, another similar topic is there's been talk about school employees across the state joining the state plan or a similar plan being made available. Have you heard anything about progress on that front?
I've heard, I think, the same. I haven't heard any progress on that. I think that would be a challenge to get all the school divisions across the state to all agree to all come together. I came from a state, actually, where we did that. We all were part of the state plan, but I haven't heard any new information about...
So for all practical purposes, for the purpose of this budget, local choice is what our option is?
Correct.
Okay. I like that you're going to be promoting the wellness programs. I... Thank you very much. Big proponent of that. I'm just curious if during your discussions with local choice, whether you learned any more about our ability to track participation in those wellness incentive programs?
I wasn't able to break it down just to us individually. It's traditionally pretty low in the industry for... To the point of even like less than 5%. So we try to promote it. There's a lot of opportunity there.
So the Affordable Care Act allows insurers to incent employees to participate in wellness programs. So is that... Does local choice provide any incentives for participation or behaviors that are... Or the reverse penalties for...
We don't have it set up like I've seen in years past. People would have, you know, a penalty if you were a smoker or non-smoker. There's some negatives and some potential challenges there with items like that. So, but then they don't break out incentives like that. And I don't know if that's what we want to do either. Sure.
The... Both the HSA... I used to have an HSA and I miss it. I'm a big fan of them. But that, in addition to the spousal potential surcharge, the administrative costs associated with either of those are something that I'm curious about, you know, in terms of developing a relationship with a bank willing to set up the HSA account for the employees, whether that's handled through the division or whether every man for himself...
Probably actually set up a partner with a company to do that and do an RFP to get a company to come do that with us.
So...
With the HSA.
Right. So have you... Have you considered the costs associated with monitoring spouses and charging spouses and then also setting up an HSA and the cost of that would...
Monitoring of the spouses definitely would be a challenge with potentially, I've seen it where people are asking, you know, people to sign affidavits and, you know, did your spouse really have this insurance and those opportunities? So that'd be a challenge, but that's an option.
An option you think your department could work into your already pretty intense workflow? Okay. And then I had another question about the tiered structure. I just want to confirm that it would be regardless of what this board decides in terms of whether we absorb the cost or the employee absorbs the cost or any combination thereof, it's a... For each of the three tiers, individual, individual plus and family, it's a fixed price. And then whatever plan the employee charges or picks, then they pay the rest. In other words, we're...
Correct. The... You're exactly right. And that was what we did last year to kind of fix that issue. So if the employee is choosing between the 250 or the 500 plan, we pay the same on their behalf. So like for an employee only, we're paying $605 regardless if they pick Key Advantage 500 or Key Advantage 250, the school division's paying $605. So if they want to incur more cost, the employee does, if they want to pick that 250 plan, it costs a little bit more, they'll pay, instead of paying $24 a month, they'll pay $77 a month. And so we set that all the same. So employee only, the school division's paying $605. For employee plus one, the school division on employees, this is per month, paying $1,015. And for the family, they're paying $1,500 on their behalf every month.
And have you... And do you know how the HSA premiums would disrupt that? Because they tend to be significantly lower than those other plans. So that could factor in? Or would... Or does that fixed price include not only the premium, but then the HSA contribution?
Well, we could set that up. We could design it to have even a lower cost and then if we desire to put money into an HSA on their behalf, you could, like some people might put $100 or something into somebody's HSA per month if the price was that much lower.
But is that what you're... Is that kind of what you envisioned because...
That's the way I've seen it done before successfully.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Beers?
I just want to go back. I want to make sure I understand this. With the 250, 500 deductible, is there a difference? I know we... The district pays $605. If somebody gets a 250 deductible rather than a $500 deductible, are they going to pay more per month per premium?
They are, correct.
So they will. So there is... So it's to the staff members, if they can afford the $500, their monthly premium is going to be lower than if it's 250?
Right. Right now, for the 500 plan, the school division pays 600... For an employee only, the school division pays $605 and the employee pays $24 per month. For the 250 plan, which is more expensive, the school division pays the same $605, but the employee pays $77 per month.
Oh, okay. So that's a $50 difference. The other question I had is how are... You know, because we're... This is, you know, this is the benefits... Part of a benefits package in terms of recruiting and retention. How does, you know, the spousal surcharge, some of these other things, how are other districts... How do we compare with other, you know, our competitors?
Look at some of our competitors. They are breaking out spouses. They're not doing it to... They're creating a whole new tier. I think Chesapeake, Gloucester, Hampton, Newport News, Portsmouth, York, if you look at their benefits packages, they're breaking out spouses in different ways. And it is hard to compare health insurance plans because we have a PPO, they might have an HMO, they might have a high deductible plan. So it is kind of hard to compare apples to apples. But it is a trend where people are breaking out spouses different ways.
In terms of that, you know, because that's what everybody's concerned about, in terms of that monthly premium, say, family, how do we compare... How would we compare just dollar-wise?
I think we're comparable to our neighboring districts. I mean, in dollar-wise and even kind of in cost share, we're comparable.
Thanks.
Ms. Hummel?
With the family plan, I just want to have the question, is there an additional? Is there like a cap on how many kids you can have? You could... So families with six or seven kids are pretty much paying the same as families with two kids?
Correct.
Until they're 26 years old? Okay.
Eligible.
Eligible.
Couple of questions. 1,300 employees participate. How many spouses are we talking about there?
664 spouses currently covered.
So roughly half. Right at half. So let me just kind of go through this as we do that. The... If we... You know, when we... As we change... As we change our health insurance, basically that is affecting take-home pay from... Of our teachers. So, you know, this is really something that we need to think about and understand when we're changing this, that whatever salary increase we could be giving, we could be taken away. So we have 664 spouses that are covered. Do you know... Do we know the breakdown of how many of those are in the plus one? How many of those are in the family? You know, because part of the making decision here is that we don't necessarily have data upon which to make a decision. So how much... My question is how many employees am I going to give an emotional event to if I start charging for their... Start giving them a surcharge for their spouse and reducing their take-home pay? How do I... How can I... Do we have that kind of data?
There's currently, I think, 193 employee plus one and that one is a spouse out of the 660.
So you know that's a spouse and not a kid?
Pardon?
You know that's a spouse and not a kid?
Yes, sir.
So that's 191?
193.
93.
That were employee plus one and that was a spouse.
And the family? Because I guess if you charge for the spouse in the family plan, if, in Mrs. Hummel's example, there are seven kids there, the... Taking the spouse off of that policy doesn't save the school system any money.
Spouses cost more than children.
Understand that, but the premium is for family.
Correct.
So if I have an employee, a spouse and two kids, and I charge a premium for the spouse and move him to, or her, to their employer, those... The school system doesn't save any money because it's still the same $1,500 family plan number.
But the same three tiers that we have now.
Right. So you move... You take... You take an employee, their spouse and two kids, you're paying 1,500 bucks a month for their health insurance, right? For the school system is. So you take the spouse, put her on their employer, you have an employee, two kids, you're still paying 1,500 bucks because they're still a family. And so you're... The school system is not saving any money that way.
May get better experience in years, future years, because that's spouses off.
But next year, we wouldn't be saving any money if we charged a surcharge.
Unless you charge that spouse money per month or something.
Well, the spouse is not on you anymore. It's on the... It's on her employer, right?
An option.
Right. So when we talk about a surcharge, what are we talking about?
Anywhere from like $50 to $100 per month.
Or as...
For a spouse.
For a spouse. So in the example of a family of six, two with four kids, if I charge that 50 to 100 bucks and driving him off, we're not really saving any money that way. What you're saying is that because the spouse, their insurance costs are more down the road because your insurance costs are less, you may save money on a premium by driving that spouse off. But in real dollars for next year, you're not saving any money.
Right. Correct.
So... But we're reducing take-home pay by 50 to 100 bucks or whatever that surcharge would be.
Correct.
Okay. What is our current breakdown of... So you said you had 605 is what we pay for an employee alone and they pay the 24/77. What are the numbers on the other two tiers?
For employee plus one on Key Advantage 250, the employer, we pay $1,015.
Right.
The employee pays per month. The employee pays $247 per month for a total of $1,262 per month. For the family on the 250 plan, the employer pays $1,500 per month. The employee pays $341 per month for a total of $1,841 per month. The lesser expensive plan, the Key Advantage 500, we pay for employee only the same $605 per month and the employee pays $24 per month for a total of $629. For employee plus one, we pay the same $1,015. The employee pays $149 per month for a total of $1,164 per month. For the family, we pay the same $1,500 per month. The employee pays 1,009... One... I'm sorry. Employee pays...
It's a big number.
$198 for a total of $1,698.
Okay. So... This is, I guess, what I would kind of want to know is how much money do we think we would save by adding the surcharge? How much... What do we think? How many people would take the surcharge? How many people would...
It's hard to tell. I mean, I don't know how many folks would actually take it or not. If we added it on, how many... I don't... I'm not sure how many folks would anticipate that they would take. I think a lot of folks would take it. It's still a good bargain. It's still a good deal.
Just something, you know, we... This is also a... And, you know, we're... It's a cost of the employee. It's an engagement issue with the employee because, you know, that's just another hit we're going to give them. So when we talk about cost share... So, so when you, when we talk about cost share, would, would all these numbers just go up by whatever the percentage of the, whatever the percentage of the?
It'd go up, correct. I mean, if, if the employer absorbed it, then the percentage is going to go up, you know, currently on the ones I gave you.
Yeah, the whole 2% would go, the whole 2% of the entire combined premium would go to the school system.
Yeah, it would change ours, we would end up paying slightly more and they would pay.
Or we could do 2% on both sides.
Correct, you could, you could break it up.
Yeah, so, so, figure out how that works, let's see. I'll get to you in a second, Mrs. Cook, you just relax over there. So anyway, as providing direction, in my humble opinion, I don't, we, we need to have kind of some numbers of what do we think we're going to save, what do we think, you know, and, and kind of take, when we look at, when we look at charging the spouse or a charge, other people have done this, this is not new, new territory, so what have they seen? How many people have, how many people haven't, you know, we need to kind of have some educated guesses here as we make those, as we make those decisions and kind of give you that guidance for that. Dr. Constantino slides forward.
I thought you were going for the mic, sorry.
My mic.
Ms. Cook?
I just had a question about the, the cost share. So if the division were to absorb the 2%, this is challenging my math skills, our 605 would be increased by 2% and then go to 617, and the 1,015, is, I mean, is that what yours?
Be pretty close to that, because we try to keep, as we described the, the issue from last year that we fixed, where it was going to be the same cost for, regardless of what plan the people chose. So we wanted to make sure we, that we are able to still keep that structure, so that we would pay the same for employee only on the 250 plan or the 500 plan. So it's not straight just 2% times 605, because it's not going to, it wouldn't work out exactly that way. We don't want to create different levels for the 250 plan and the 500 plan, where, where we're contributing more for the more expensive plan, we want to contribute the same amount. But we could absorb most of it, or almost all of it. You can't do the percent times the percent.
I would like to see the math on the 2% and then 1%, perhaps, just if, if we could see those. I'm definitely in favor of an HSA, but I'd like to see what those premiums are going to look like, because I suspect they're going to be perhaps below the country, or pretty darn close, particularly because we absorb such a generous share. And so I'd like to see what those are, and then, and then the spousal surcharge, did anyone on the committee talk about not providing, I'm sorry, go back here, I'm sorry, before I, it says prohibit spouses with other employee offered coverage.
The committee did not recommend that, that's just an option, and there's other employers that, that do that.
That's the surcharge.
I believe, I think even.
Do they do that?
Seeing anecdotally, people come, they're migrating, spouses are migrating to our plan.
Have we reached out to them to learn about their administrative costs and mechanisms and procedures and all that?
I have not, but I can.
Yeah.
When we, so, and on this spousal surcharge option here, did the, did the task force recommend one, or?
The second one, they recommended the surcharge for spouses who have the opportunity for health insurance as their employer.
But is not, is, that's not currently baked into the budget that we have in front of us? What we have baked in the budget is 2%, it's a 2% increase, but we don't have any?
I think, like you said, this probably isn't going to net us much money, or gain or loss.
But you're correct.
You're correct.
The proposed budget does not account for anything other than the 2% increase.
So, so, okay, so the proposed budget has a 2% increase, and, and by charging this, we don't expect to have a significant, a significant dollar figure that would save the school system tens and thousands of dollars.
No, please.
Okay. I, I would just, I'm, I struggle with charging our employees and their families for, to take more money out of their pockets when we should be looking at the other direction, since we don't do that very well either. The wellness programs, there's no cost for the wellness programs for the?
Correct.
But those are good things to do, and we would, we would certainly have to encourage people to, would want to encourage people to participate in that. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We've captured in note-taking this evening the kinds of things you said you wanted to see, and that really was our purpose tonight, because we can go in several directions. And as you start to calculate, there's a lot of number crunching that could happen. So before we started that, we were trying to get some idea of, of direction. So for those board members who said, I'd like to see, I think we've captured that and we can do that. If, if you haven't said that this evening, or if there's something that you want, the sooner that we know what it is you're interested in, the maximum amount of time to, to get this information done into you would be very helpful to us.
I do have a question about, as I'm, I certainly know a health insurance guru, but I do have a question about, on, are there caps on benefits for these insurance plans? For example, I'm thinking catastrophic insurance, are there caps in case that an employee has some kind of catastrophic illness that might affect, you know, them forever, or even for a short period of time? But is there a cap on how many benefits, how much of a benefit the employee can receive?
Like an out-of-pocket limit, you mean?
Yeah, out-of-pocket limits, things like that, I mean, you're talking about the deductibles, but, you know, if you have a catastrophic illness that?
There are out-of-pocket limits for each of the plans, there's also not a lifetime cap, and there's protection also for the insurer and in turn for us, in that there's a, what's called a stop-loss insurance. If a bill increases over, I believe it's $125,000, then that isn't payable or chargeable to our experience.
Who is it charged to?
We have insurance for that.
Oh, for the stop-loss, that, so then it goes to another type of insurance? And, okay, thank you, I wasn't aware of that, that's good information.
Thank you.
On the heels of that, we will talk with you about the compensation. And again, to remind you, at the January retreat, we heard three, three clear messages. One, compression, two, paying attention to employees at the top of the scale, and three, competitive salaries at the, at the start of the scale. So, Mr. Baker will share with you a recommendation, it doesn't necessarily have to be the recommendation, but it's a recommendation to start the conversation.
With that being said, we are recommending a new teacher pay scale. This new scale would address compression, would make us more competitive by increasing the entry level, teacher salary, and it would provide a salary increase for all staff, even those that are at the top of the scale. This slide shows the beginning of our teacher pay scale. You'll notice a couple of things, it's a little bit complex, we have six columns. Also, on the left-hand side, you'll notice that we have 14 years of experience compressed into the first seven steps. Our scale, as you progress through each step, is a 2.5% increase. And so what we've proposed, and also I want to apologize, point out in this scale, we have the six columns, including the bachelor's plus 15 and the master's plus 15. So we're proposing a new scale that would be, have less columns, be a simpler scale, it would have no compression, it would have no multi-year steps, and this is what a proposed scale could look like, and this would just be the first eight steps. The steps would be narrower, so instead of 2.5% in between each step, they'd be 1.5%. But this does provide the opportunity for the board to have consistent step increases in future years, as long as we're budgeting that 1.5%. The entry level salary, you can see on this scale, is, for our bachelors, is $41,500, and then it progresses through the whole scale. Speaking of starting teacher pay, this slide shows where we rank compared to the other school divisions we compete against in the region for talent, for starting teacher pay. Our current bachelor starting teacher pay is $40,301. And so what we proposed is to increase it to $41,500. That'd put us in the middle of the pack, assuming that nobody else changes their teacher pay scale. So it's a step in the right direction, you know, to help us be more competitive as we recruit teachers. I've also given you a copy of a proposed scaling, it's the next handout that's underneath your pile there. But this proposed teacher scale would align, you know, years of service, there'd be no multi-year steps, there'd be no compression. It does simplify the scale, because we would combine those plus 15 columns, so the bachelor's plus 15 and the bachelor's column, we would combine it and actually benefit the teachers, and then combine the plus 15 column from the master's and the master's plus 15 to also benefit the teachers. It'd make us, this new scale would make us more competitive, and it would help us, it would also have, like I said, the increase of 1.5% between each step. Every teacher would receive an increase on this scale, even if you're at the top of the scale, we're, we're talking about, we would even expand some of the, some of the columns to add some steps in those, in those columns.
Can I just interrupt you there for a second?
Yes, sir.
So if I look at the slide that says 2015, 2016, teacher salary schedule, at master's plus 15, go back one more, master's plus 15, a step eight, it's 50034.
Correct.
And so if I go to the next slide, master's plus 15 goes away, so they go back to master's degree, step eight, they're at 47090.
Well, the people on the step eight would go to step nine the next year. So that would be people that were on step seven the previous year.
So, so, when I look at, so go back to the previous one, so I look at years of experience, right now, there's the eights, the eight years of experience on step five on the slide, right?
Correct.
If I go to the next one, eight years of experience on step eight. So does the person who has, go back to the previous, I mean, this is going to be fun, 15 years of experience, does that person no longer be at step eight and they go to step 15?
They'll be on step 15.
Which, which will, which will give them?
They'll get an increase.
Keep them whole.
Correct, nobody's going to go backwards, everybody will get an increase.
So, so when I go up to, go previous?
Go back.
Master's plus 15, does that basically, the master's degree goes up to the master's degree 15 scale?
Not exactly, like, it's pretty close. It's, we're going to, we're going to combine them as we're working through the scale to, to make everybody have a positive experience, to, to make them all have it that way, and it'll be, they'll slide, it's not, I don't want to say they're all just going to slide over, they're not going to be quite that way, but it's going to be to the positive.
You're going to have to get somebody on an Excel spreadsheet to kind of show that to me.
Okay.
Because, because that was just?
I'd like to see both sides.
Right, and you get one this one, one that way, and then have the pluses and minuses, that'd be great. So that's, that's, so I will let you continue now, but that was just, I just wanted to interrupt you there, because that's where I was getting confused.
Well, and, and what we're trying to do is then potentially expand some of the scales, and we'd have to expand some of the scales, because when the plus 15, if we combine those two scales together, then it would actually expand some of those scales to, to the teachers' benefit, to give them the opportunity that they wouldn't have a top level there.
Okay, we just need to be assured of that as, as we go forward.
Right.
To understand that. Because as the speaker earlier, who's getting zero, who's getting one, who's getting more than one, we just need to make sure we understand all of those numbers.
What we're proposing is, everybody would get an increase for the?
Increase, but not necessarily one. 1%.
Right, it'd be?
There'd be, there'd be different numbers on that, because we're not feeding 5,000 people here, right? So we're, so, somebody's going to get, somebody's going, going to not get as much in order to, to do all that.
The, the average step would be 1.5%.
Yeah, the average step, there's some that's above it, and there's some below it, but the average is one.
1.5%.
1.5. So the, that's the average, there's some above and there's some below. We just need to understand that. Sorry, I had to interrupt.
No, no, it's a good point, but the intent is for the, potentially increase those and have those additional steps, and so everybody, including those at the top of the scale, would see, receive a, a step increase. Obviously, this is a, a big part of the budget, so the, when we do a 1.5% average increase for teachers, we also do a 1.5% average increase for all employees, so for support and administration. That's cost 2.4 million dollars, and this is what is proposed in the, in the budget.
Thomas?
So I have a particular interest for some of our employees that are on the lower end of the spectrum for their salary, and then we've got some administrators that are on a very upper scale. And is there going to be any kind of attention paid to, when you talk about the average of a 1.5%, that someone who's making, you know, in the 90s, $100,000, whatever, versus someone who's making in the 40s or 50s? Where, are you making an accommodation for salary for the, I'm just wondering, if you're making, or at least is that going through your thought process?
I mean, the, I guess we start with the teachers, and I guess the, the idea is the, the teachers would be a 1.5% increase average.
Take the teachers out of it, I'm just talking the, the non-teachers, the?
Well, we traditionally follow them, and, and what we do for, we try to have all the groups of employees be consistent in terms of they're all going to get a 1.5% average increase. But no, we haven't broken it out differently. I'm not sure if I understand?
I have a question.
Ms., are you, are you done?
It's just that an extra $100 a month means a lot more to someone at a lower end of the, of the pay scale than an extra $100 a month at the upper, that's all, I'm just...
Dr. Constantino?
Only from a perspective of previous boards, previous boards have always desired to treat all employee groups the same. If that's a change, that certainly is at the will of the board, but we have not recommended in the past that we treat employee groups differently.
Mrs. Young?
And I agree with that. However, if we're treating all employee groups the same, that includes teachers that are at the top of the pay scale, they should not be getting less than the 1.5% increase also. Yes, they're making more than someone who's at the lower end of the scale, but to continually degrade them according to a lower percentage isn't fair either, and so I think in, I think if we're going to do this, then it should be an equal increase between steps. So if it's 1.5 for the teacher who's at the second year of the step, then I still think it should be a 1.5% increase for the teacher who's at the 20th year of the step, or having seen the rest of the scale. But I, I don't think it's fair to make them less than the person who's at the bottom. And, and if we're giving everybody a 1.5%, then I think that applies across everybody equally, so.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Baker, this is really wonderful work. I know you've spent a lot of time thinking about this and trying to figure it out. I would like to see, reiterating what I was saying earlier, a document that reflects the old... the old as it transitions to the new, and if there's any way to incorporate longevity pay into that, that would be great, because there are teachers who, I don't know how the longevity pay fits into the steps, or whether that's layered on top of...
Does not, what I've shown you and talked about does not include longevity pay.
Okay, and so is that a layer on top of the steps?
Right, they get that in addition.
Right, okay, so that would be, I presume that's towards the higher numbers in the steps, so if somehow that could be reflected, that would be wonderful to see if there's a way to do that.
I'm not sure that every, it would be, sorry, I think it's nineteen, twenty years that you do, but not everybody who's in, in those steps has that, because some of them came to us later, and is that fair?
We have ninety-six teachers who had twenty-one years of experience, who were receiving the longevity pay, and we have seventy-five teachers who had twenty-six years of experience that are receiving the longevity pay.
That is, that is longevity pay with WJCC.
Right.
So if they came to us as late in career, then they are not getting longevity pay.
Predates me, sir.
At the time the program was in effect, it was years of teaching experience.
Total.
So someone could bring...
But it was with WJCC or not?
...experience before.
Okay, but if you came to us after the program was over, then you're not getting it. Got you.
The numbers we've showed, didn't, we weren't talking about longevity pay.
So that's a layer over this stuff.
That's, they get that in addition. And we have, we're not recommending any, we haven't recommended any changes with that.
Right, no, I understand that, thank you. Nor am I, but I just wanna understand how it structurally fits in, if that's at all So I appreciate adjusting entry level pay for teachers, I think that's important to keep us competitive, but that also then, but our, never mind, I'll change the, let me ask another question. The, the PowerPoint says every teacher will receive an average of 1.5 percent, just building on what Mrs. Hummel was saying, that also conveys to non-teaching staff. Correct, okay. And also building on, I'm sorry, were you gonna say something?
I just said correct.
Okay. I just want to, I, I too am concerned about, or I wanna be thoughtful about this division as a, an employer in this community, and our impact on our, on economic development, and one of the things that we know is important to a community is, is paying employees wages that allow them to live in our community so that they're part of our community. And so I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about what, how many employees and that, that are in, that we pay under what is considered a living wage for one person living in our community, which is twenty-six thousand five hundred and sixty annually? I would just like to, so that we're all aware of, how many people are in our employ who are making that amount or less, or less than that amount for that matter?
We have, for twenty-six thousand, from your definition of the living wage, twenty-six thousand five hundred and sixty employees, we have one thousand two hundred and thirty-five employees making at least that much.
Making at least that much? So how many would that mean that make less than that? And just to be clear, this, that number is from the MIT living wage calculator based on James City County.
I don't have exact numbers, but I have percentages.
That'd be lovely, thank you.
Thirty-one point six-nine of division employees make less than twenty-six thousand five sixty annually. Twenty-one point nine-six of those are full-time, nine point seven-three percent of those are part-time. But I also think it's important for us to note that that twenty-six thousand five sixty number is for a household of four. That's the data that we read in that report, and we don't know everyone's family situation, so they may be the sole provider, which that would become a variable. However, a family of four is what that living wage piece from that MIT report that we looked at.
That's one per...
We'd have to go back and look at that.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Thank you, this is very good work.
Dr. Beers.
I just wanna come back to that 1.5, because I, maybe I heard something different earlier, that there would be some teachers who would, whose increase would be less than 1.5, is that true or not? Am I misunderstanding? When you say average, that means somebody, some teacher's gonna get less than 1.5 percent, correct?
It could be, because some of the scales, earlier in the scale, the, the step wasn't, and even in the past, wasn't even, wasn't 2.5 percent.
Okay, so I, that, I'm, that, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that, because when we talk about our administrators, and I, I agree with Dr. Constantine, that has been, Constantine, that's been the tradition here, you know, for as long as I've ever been here, is that, is that administrators get the same average increase as the, as the others. But if you have teachers making, whose increase is less than 1.5, then they're not making 1.5. Their increase is not 1.5. So I'm, I'm, everybody is not getting a 1.5 raise. Is that correct?
It's an average.
So we, so we can't keep, so if everybody's not getting a 1.5, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm in a quandary about that, because if that's the number we're gonna use to compensate individuals that are paid far more than that, than that classroom teacher I'm, I'm concerned about, the classroom teacher's only gonna get 1 percent or less.
I may, without going too deeply into how we built the structure and, and giving you college credit for the tutorial, we've been facing two challenges. One is compression, and that is a multi-year, six- or seven-year problem that developed over time. The other is competitive salaries. If we increase the competitive salaries and don't have enough money for a step increase, then we increase compression. If we fix compression by moving everybody up a step, it's cost prohibitive to also increase the whole structure and bring up our entry level to be competitive. What we've tried to do in this is to correct both by stretching out the years and giving an increase to the people in the first block. We can't correct a seven-year challenge in one year. We will be getting to the point where everyone will be across the board getting the one and a half percent increase if the structure is approved that has one hundred, one, one and a half percent in between the steps. So we'll be able to get there. What we're doing isn't dissimilar to what other school divisions who are fighting the same issues of compression are facing, and in studying other school divisions, they have variations between what they're paying and the steps right now, trying to fix the same thing that we are. So part of the challenge is to, to take a multi-year issue and fix it as quickly as possible, and that's what we're trying to address. But ensuring at least somebody gets a minimum raise, to go with a one and a half percent increase when we have a two and a half percent difference between, between steps right now would mean that we just...
Well, what would happen if, you know, with this budget, we just said, everybody gets a one and a half percent increase? Is that, how much more or less would that total amount of dollars be compared to the system that you're, you know, the, what you're, what you're proposing now?
Well, if we're saying 2.4 million to give everybody on average one and a half percent, then it'd be approximately this, this...
Coming back to that average thing, I'm, I'm talking about, and if, and if you don't have the numbers now, that's fine, I'd just like to know what they were. If you just went across and said, okay, you know, we've seen how things have been the last few years, let's give everybody a 1.5 percent raise.
You could do that, I suspect, and we'll defer to, to finance on the dollar figure, but, but I would just say that if we go with a one and a half percent for everybody, we will not be able to change the structure. It will be a cost of living adjustment, which would help increase the entry level pay in everyone's pay, but it's going to exacerbate compression, because we can't move people up a step, they would have to stay where they were on the scale, and it's gonna add one more year of compression.
But they would get a 1.5 percent raise.
They would get 1.5 percent, but the compression would worsen.
But the teacher who started this year and the teacher who starts next year would be getting the same pay, you would make, you would add more compression.
Just for information purposes, every 1 percent salary increase is about eight-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars.
So I think that the point I was trying to make before, whether the one and a half percent is across the board for everybody or on average for everybody, the money's going to stay approximately if we're increasing our salaries by one and a half percent.
Sure, so the step increase means that somebody will get a two and a half percent raise, because they're gonna go up a step, correct?
If we kept the structure the way it is now...
Yeah, that's what I mean, the structure you have now, yeah.
Yeah, we would, we would keep the compression, and people would go up one step and get a two and a half percent increase in proportional cost associated with it.
I know it's a challenge, I mean, it's, it's a, almost any organization that, that has employees with, with, with a fixed budget and reduced budget, they're all, you know, we've all faced that, so I, it's not an enviable position to be in, I know.
So, so, make sure I understand this. Right, if, if, if we were to give everyone a 1.5 percent raise, that would be 2.4 million dollars, because that's what our salary line item is, so everybody gets the 1.5 percent, that's a number.
That's fixing the compression.
But that's not fixing the compression, that's just 1.5 percent. If I give everybody 1.5 percent, that's 2.4 million dollars, and it doesn't fix the compression. What we're trying to do is fix the compression, so by fixing the compression, that's gonna result in some of the folks on the lower end of the scale probably getting more than 1.5 percent, and some of the folks on the higher end of the scale not getting 1.5 percent, but getting something, because we're trying to fix the compression where we've had eight years of hires stuck at level one, or, or in the, in the first opening tiers, right?
Right. We're, we're trying to simultaneously address entry level salary to remain competitive and fix compression. So if you go back to the salary scale, that top left-hand corner, entry level bachelor drives the entire rest of the structure.
But then the result of all that, if, is if you're trying to fix the compression, you're gonna give some to some, and you're gonna give less to less, and so your average is still gonna be 1.5 percent, but the, some will get more than 1.5, if it's still an average, right, so everybody above, there'd be people get more and people get less. It's relatively simple mathematics, I believe.
It's set us up essentially in the future, have that step to be more consistent, to be 1.5 for everybody.
Right, so in the future, when we, when, after we fix the compression, then everybody gets the 1.5 or the 2.5 or the whatever.
For, for this first year, we had to incrementally introduce steps where people were compressed together.
Yes.
So, so we had to do that. That doesn't fit mathematically or financially to then spread everybody by the one and a half percent. It's, it's a little bit mind-boggling, but as you go through it, this is something that is the first in, in the progress of fixing a seven-year plan in less than seven years, but we've gotta get started by spreading everybody out and...
If you give everybody 1.5 percent and fix the compression, you're actually gonna have to have 2 percent more money on that salary line item because, or something along those lines, because you have to, it's gonna have to be more money. I got it. Do you have something?
No, thank you.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah, but I'll, I'll...
Okay. Anybody have any more comments? Mrs. Young.
Are, are the administrators on a pay scale also on a, as, you know, a tiered kind of pay scale where they have first-years administrators, second year, third year?
Yeah, theirs is a, a pay range, and then they'll move through the range, they have a, a starting and midpoint, and, and they'll, if we give a one and a half percent increase, they'll move one and a half percent into that range.
And would the administrators get 1.5 percent, every one of them? I mean, the ones that are at the top, would they still get the 1.5 percent? They wouldn't be lowered, because, I mean, it's not gonna be an average for them? Well, it would be if they're all getting 1.5, but...
The proposal is they would get 1.5 percent too, and in the past, they've even potentially capped them too, but if they gave it 1.5 percent to everybody, they would get a two.
I do understand the issues you're facing, but it's hard. I think it's really hard, because as, if, when you're capped at the top of your pay scale and you're getting close to retirement, that, that affects your retirement when you retire, especially if you're going to, to get social security. I know that's one of my peeve issues, but it does affect those teachers that are at the top of the pay scale if they don't get that increase, because that's how their social security is figured, so...
And what we're proposing is to actually expand the scales to give them another opportunity to get another step.
Show us that.
I, I will. It's, in the draft that you have, it, it has it there too, but I need to do a better job to show you the current versus that.
Thanks. Are there any other conversation, questions on board members about compensation or health insurance? Are there any more comments from board members about the budget in general? Mrs. Cook.
It's about buses, Mr. Baker.
Oh.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. He's, he's running for the hills.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to better understand the recommendation in here of, in the superintendent's budget as it pertains to buses. If you could just help me understand that a little bit better, I'd be most grateful.
In order to try to give you a proposal that met the requirements that we were facing to make our request to the county and city reasonable, we looked at what our bus replacement plan looked like. In fiscal year seventeen, there are fourteen buses that will reach fifteen years or older. In fiscal year eighteen, there are no buses that will reach fifteen years or older. However, I do wanna remind the board that we do have in our current fiscal year sixteen budget, money from the county and the city for three buses, that's budgeted. We did hold off on the purchase of that to make sure that enrollment held true, so we are going to bring to you a proposal to purchase those three buses before we reach the end of the year. Additionally, the city has allocated funding in our year-end spending plan to purchase one bus. So in a future meeting, you will see the purchase of four buses come before you, but it's important to note that that is funding that has already been allocated in prior budgets, that has nothing to do with our recommendation going forward.
I know it's probably the last thing you wanna do, but could you, there was a wonderful grid of the bus replacement plan, could you reproduce that with current numbers, maybe including these four buses, just for those of us who have poor memories, so that we just have something?
The, the three buses that were allocated in our fiscal year sixteen budget are included on that graphic to show that we purchased nine buses this year.
Okay.
So we will be able to move forward by one bus with the city approval of the year-end spending plan for one bus.
Any visual representation?
Yep, we can do that.
It would be really very much appreciated.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments on the budget, the broader budget tonight? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Berta, Mr. Baker, Mr. Andre, all the rest to, to help us understand where we're going, we will continue this discussion going forward. So I know there's been a lot of good, a lot of good work by a lot of good people, and it's, it is a complicated issue, and we'll keep moving forward. That brings us to eleven point zero one, board members. Any board members have comments tonight?
Have them, but I'm...
Mrs. Young.
Yes. Is it my turn?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, during the organization meeting, we asked Dr. Beers to, to review Robert's Rules of Order for Small Group and Large Group, and to determine the pros and cons between small and large group rules as it applies to us as a, as a board. And I request that we place it on the agenda for our next meeting, our next work session, that we discuss it in, in depth, and review best practices and, and talk about how we would like to see our board operate.
Assuming Dr. Beers will be ready next meeting, we can do that?
I really support that, I'd like to do that.
Okay.
One more too. And first of all, I, I do wanna compliment, I, I'm not over here on timeout, I...
And first of all, I do want to compliment, I'm not over here on timeout, I want you to know that, I'm not on timeout. Although it may seem that way. But I do want to thank the calendar committee and the budget committee, that is a tremendous amount of work. And having been on a calendar committee before, I applaud you. I, I'm sorry that I'm who I am, I just have to ask questions. But I do want to compliment you, and I do want you to know that I do appreciate your work, and I understand, understand the handicaps and all the variables you're, you're under, and the same with the budget. I totally admire you people, so I want you to know that. My, my other thing is, I, I just want to make a statement about, to parents and teachers and staff about repercussions. I've, I've had some rumblings in the community that, that people are afraid to come forward and talk about issues, and I would like to just address the fact that, that whatever the current issues are, that I feel like though, that we need to hear from our community, and, and I reject the idea that, that any repercussion should be applied to that person for coming forth, and, and I know that's probably not happening, but I just want to reassure people that, that I'm sure that the board would agree with me that that would not be acceptable behavior. So that's just a statement I wanted to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to echo Mrs. Young's appreciation, and thanks to staff for really good work. We appreciate it very much. And I had a couple announcements and then a request. Just wanted to let everyone know that on February 18th, the PTA Council is having a meeting at Jamestown High School, and RSVP is requested, but I encourage anyone who's interested to attend, and information on how to reach PTA Council is on the school division's website. Last week, all of us in some form or fashion were at, in Richmond to attend the, either VSBA training itself or events surrounding that. It was high-quality training, so I wanted everyone to know that we're all committed to doing our work and learning how to do it best. Several of us had an opportunity to meet with Senators Norman and Miller, which was, it was wonderful for them to receive us, and we also got to visit a bit with Delegate Mason. We were not able to connect with Delegate Poggy, but I did hear from her office, and we'll be trying to schedule something here in the home office in the not-too-distant future, so I'll be in touch about your collective availability. I know several of us went to Williamsburg First Baptist to ring the bell for liberty and for equity in education, so thank you all who were able to do that, that was great. And then one request I had of my colleagues here. Late last year, the Daily Press ran an article about compensation for those who serve the public, specifically school boards, and that article indicated that this body may be paid less comparatively than other bodies. And so I was curious if that was something that could be put on an agenda for an upcoming meeting that's not part of our budget, but it's part of the larger budget process for the localities. And so I was hoping that we could do a little research, present it perhaps at the next meeting, and, and discuss it, and see if it's something that we want to consider. So I was curious if other members would be interested in doing that.
Sure. Yep. Okay. Put that on the work session agenda, Mrs. Sarza. You good?
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Beers?
First of all, I, I would like to echo comments made about the finance department. It is an arduous task, and I very much appreciate the number of hours that it takes to put that information together, and even though I ask for occasionally additional information, I hope you don't take that as a, as a criticism, because I very much respect the work that you do and, and your willingness to, to help us as well, try to deal through some of these difficult financial times. On maybe a little more positive note, I would very much like to congratulate the newly minted, national board-certified teachers. It is a, an arduous task. Hopefully, it's a, it's a meaningful one, and a, an activity that allows a teacher, allows a teacher to really fully understand and appreciate what it is to be a, a real professional. And I'm glad, Mr. Superintendent, that we have as many as we have in our district. I think that's, that speaks well for the district, so I, I very much appreciate that. I would like to, I'd like to put something on, on the agenda. This sort of came out of a comment that the superintendent made, and I'd like to see this on, on a future agenda meeting, and that is to review the out-of-the-zone school attendance policy. I would very much like to know, for example, the number of students who seek that and of those who seek it, how many of them are allowed to do that? I'd also like to know the number of athletes that that covers as well, how it's implemented, and probably just as importantly, how it's monitored and enforced. So I hope, I've got support on the board for doing, okay.
Yeah, I think we, I think we got something of that last fall, but we can, we can revisit that.
Yeah, I'd like that. That's it?
That's all? Miss Alma?
Yes, I would like to echo everybody's compliments here for the difficult task of both the calendar committee and the budget report, and being grilled by us is no fun, fun task. So we, we just are asking those questions that we think everybody out there is asking, so bear with us. And I wanted to pass on a compliment. When I was at, in Richmond this past week, I talked to an associate of mine who is a superintendent of one of our neighboring schools, and he said, "You are so lucky to have Ms. Berta working in your division. She is a treasure." And so I do want to put that compliment out there, that you are well-respected not only in this community, but beyond this community. I wanted to second Dr. Beers' concern with the out-of-zone policy. I also have heard from different citizens that, for whatever reason, they, they think that we should be relooking at, at the policy and making sure that the policy is being followed to the law. And then on a positive note, I would like to let the community know that we've got almost $70,000 out there, people with that WJCC scholarship application. That is a lot of money, and I think every student should have, should know about it. I'm wondering if it's possible to put a link for it on the website, so it's easy for our parents to be able to direct their student, their children to make, I know, because I'm involved with it in the past, they've made it an electronic survey kind of application, and if there's any way that we can make it easier for the people, the students in our community to be able to apply, that would be great. That's it.
That's it? Holly, Ms. Taylor?
Yes, I'm glad to be here, and I echo ditto to all the awesome work that, that everyone has been doing with the calendar and, and the budget. You know, it takes us a while to even wrap our head around it, so we're getting there. Also enjoyed the VSBA conference up in Richmond this week, that was great. And something I was hoping we could talk about maybe at a future meeting would be the James Blair Project and its impact on the budget and future budgets. If we could discuss that at a, at a later time, that would be great. Thank you.
We will, we'll have opportunity to discuss that, we have a construction management contract coming forward and that kind of thing, so it'll obviously be on future agendas. First of all, I'd just like to say, echo the, the comments that have been, have been made about the administration and the finance department and all that. But I'd also like to say that I'd want to thank my, my fellow board members up here for, for the good work tonight, asking great questions, very thoughtful questions, and I think, I appreciate, appreciate the energy that you put in in preparation and the questions that come forward. So I think that was, that's well done. I'd also like to thank the, the, this board for their commitment to training, going to the VSBA, everybody going to Richmond, everybody participating in, you know, meeting with our, with our legislators, that, that, you know, there's, if you signed up for this gig thinking it was a twice-a-month thing, you're obviously mistaken. This, this is, the, the commitment to being on, being on the school board and to doing the job well, is, takes a very, a very active commitment, and is, don't try to figure out how much you get an hour, by the way, because it's a little insulting, so. And but, but then again, that's not why we do it. We don't do it for, for any kind of compensation, we do it because of the 11,000 students and the 1,800 employees that are here, and as well as the greater good of the community. So thank you for, thank you all for tonight, thank you all for your questions, thank you for your activity in the schools and, and getting out into the schools, I really appreciate the work that, the work that you, that you all do, and how quickly we're, we're, we're coming up to speed with the new members, so. So on to, on to upcoming meetings. There will be a closed session and special call meeting to interview candidates for the Palatine District on February 19th, on this coming Friday, at James Blair, room 501. On March 1st, there's a closed session of the school board at 6 o'clock, it'll be here in County F, and then followed by a public hearing on the fiscal year 2017 budget on March 1st at 6:30. And then immediately following that, there's a work session, also obviously here in the boardroom in F. There was another closed session meeting on March 15th at 6 o'clock that'll be here, as well as a regular meeting immediately following that at 6:30 here in Building F. For now, we will adjourn from this meeting, and in 10 minutes, which is 9:05, we will convene for a special call meeting back in the, in the boardroom to interview a candidate for the Palatine School Board seat. So hopefully on March 1st, we'll have a full complement up here, and Mrs. Young won't be ostracized to the corner over there. So without objection, we're adjourned.